Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 8th, 2003 meeting of the Halton City Council. I want to begin tonight by welcoming all of you. We have a full house here in council chambers, and that's wonderful. We appreciate you being here, we appreciate your interest in the things that go on in our city that has brought you out tonight. To those who are watching either the live broadcast or the delayed telecast of our council meeting on HCTV, we welcome you as well. We have a number of items on the agenda, and we'll proceed with those in just a moment. I'll ask you to stand with me at this time. Councilmember John Williams will lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Our heads, please. Father Lord, we thank for this night, Lord, that you give us, thank for the beautiful day. Thank you for the freedom we have in this country, Lord, that we can come together and meet like this and make the decisions for our city. We ask you, Lord, to forgive us of our sins. We ask that we go through this meeting tonight, that you'll give us the wisdom to do the things to be right, to please in view. We ask for travel and mercy back home for each and every one of you here tonight, Lord, and ask these things in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Items number one through eight are listed on the consent agenda. We are pulling item number eight off of the consent agenda. We will discuss that in executive session. Action to be taken on item number eight will occur when the council convenes and opens session following our journey into executive session. We're also pulling item number four, five, and six, and we will address those immediately following approval of the consent agenda. So item four, five, six, and eight are being pulled for separate action. I'm ready now for motion regarding the consent agenda. Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I make the motion, we approve the consent agenda with the finding that on item number seven, that the purchase is a sole source procurement, and that is exempt from competitive bidding.
Councilmember Hurley?
Ask for second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, not including item four, five, six, and eight. If you will, register your vote. That passes by unanimous vote. We move now to item number four. I have a question, I think, for our attorney. Do we address these one at a time, Mr. Attorney, item four and item five, or do we address both of those together?
I prefer the city manager, or we're requested that they be told whether or not we're going to address them separately together. It doesn't matter, whatever is the most practical.
The only limitation I can think of is by law, we're supposed to adopt the budget prior to the setting the tax rate, so...
And I apologize, there do need to be separate votes on the matter, but for discussion purposes, obviously, the budget and the tax rate are tied together, and they can be discussed together at the council.
We could potentially just go in the order that they're found.
Okay, so that's what we'll do then, we'll go in the order. Mr. Torres, why don't you introduce, if you would, our Mr. Alfred, item number four.
Pat, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the ordinance for adoption of a budget for the city of Halton City, for the Crime, Control and Prevention District, for the Economic Development Corporation, that we also have here in Halton City. This rather small agenda item encompasses a great deal of time and effort by our city staff members and our council members, beginning as early as March, with our staff, where we worked for several months in close concert with the city manager to develop a budget that we could then bring forward to the council, and worked with them over a period of about a month, beginning in the middle of July, with some public workshops where each and every page of the budget was discussed at length and considered. What we have behind the agenda cover sheet is the ordinance for this budget, and as you can see, we have about thirty-four individual funds listed in section two of this ordinance. The budget consists of a great deal more than just the two primary funds, the general fund and the water and sewer fund, which compose the bulk of the expenditures for this budget for fiscal year 2003, 2004. Approval of this budget document, this ordinance will grant authority to the city manager to administer and direct city services in such a way that he is permitted to do so by charter, and as the city attorney mentioned, we are required by state law to adopt the budget prior to considering and adopting the next item, which is actually the tax rate.
Mr. Torres, any comment by you on item number four?
Not at this time, Mayor, not unless there are any questions.
Members of the council, any questions for Mr. Alfred on item number four? Are we ready for motion then regarding the approval of item number four? Councilmember Fowler?
In line for motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you want to make that motion?
Yes, sir. I move that through the possibility of looking at a few variations that we may have in the budget, I'd like to ask that we table this until our next meeting, which is September 22nd, for final reading.
Okay, we have a motion to table until September 22nd. Councilmember Hurley?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to table until September 22nd. Any discussion on the motion? Yes.
If I may, while the city attorney is doing a little research there in one of the state guidelines, I believe what he's about to bring to our attention is a requirement in state law that after certain of these quarter-page notices have been published, we have a requirement to take action on the budget no sooner than three days after the public hearing, and no greater than fourteen days after the public hearing. Otherwise, I believe, and we have to start the entire process over again, and then that would constitute, I believe, a violation of our charter because we're required to adopt the budget by the first of October.
Yeah, if I might address that, Mayor, we've run out of time tonight because the statute does say that after the public hearing is held on the tax rate, the council must vote at a meeting within three to fourteen days after the date of the public hearing, and that's what I was asking Mr. Alfred about, is where we were on the timing on all this, and he tells me we're on our fourteenth date today, is that correct?
Be that particular, I'd have to get on the calendar and count a few days, that, to be quite honest.
If you want to give us a few moments to work out the timing, since we've got to comply with state statute on when we're authorized to hold this meeting, but I don't want us to go beyond that because, as Mr. Alfred pointed out, that throws us in a spin as far as timing goes, and we're probably not going to be able to get this budget adopted by September 30th. And what I'm, actually what I'm talking about is the tax rate ordinance, these are requirements for the tax rate ordinance, but we can't adopt that until we adopt the budget, so they fall hanging in there.
Okay, may I suggest then you'd ask for a few minutes of time?
Just to confirm the timing on this.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if we could, I want us to remember, we have a motion on the floor to table this until September 22nd. We're going to take a five-minute break, let the attorney consult with whoever he needs to, and we'll come back in at fifteen till eight, and we'll proceed from that point. to do a little legal housekeeping, and at this time, Mr. Attorney, where are we?
Sorry for the confusion there, but again, to clarify, we are required to follow the requirements of the Texas Tax Code, which is state law applicable to our adoption of a budget and the tax rate. The issue that I was trying to address earlier relates to the tax rate itself. The state statute, the tax code, says that after the city council holds a public hearing, which it was required to hold, then it must adopt the tax rate no sooner than three days and no later than fourteen days after the public hearing, and that's the concern. The other issue, which we previously addressed, is the tax rate can only be adopted after the budget has been adopted, so these two ordinances go hand in hand. For that reason, my recommendation is that the council take action on the budget tonight so that we can comply with state law on the tax rate ordinance. Now, I understand there are some concerns about the budget as it's proposed tonight, and my recommendation would be for the council to adopt the budget in whatever form is comfortable, and then we can bring back a budget amendment at the next council meeting. It will take two readings of another ordinance, but the state law does specifically allow the city council to make changes in the budget for municipal purposes, and that allows for an amendment of the budget at appropriate times, and that can take place at the next council meeting if the council so desires.
Members of the council, any questions for our attorney before we proceed?
By the way, Mayor, the tax rate will be locked in by whatever you vote on tonight, but the budget can be amended.
Okay, there being no questions for the attorney, remember, we have a, you do have a, I've got three lights, and I thought that was to move forward with a motion. Councilmember Williams?
No, you asked if someone had a question. I had a question for the attorney. Could you give us an example on amending things that you could amend the budget for? What you said for municipal purposes?
Yes, you can revise fund balances, fund amounts, by lowering one fund and increasing another fund, or create additional funds in an amended budget. Basically, anything you could do in the original budget would be subject to an amendment as long as it's a legitimate municipal purpose.
Wouldn't anything you do be in a municipal purpose in a budget?
Certainly hope so. What I was reading for you, John, was language from the state statute, and it says that the governing body may make changes in the budget for municipal purposes.
Okay.
Okay, remember, we have a motion on the floor to table this until the 22nd. Councilmember Fowler?
I'd like to amend my motion, Mr. Mayor, if that'd be all right, unless you'd like to hear out the other council members.
Okay, so you're withdrawing your motion at this time?
Yes, sir, and I'd like to make a subsequent motion then, I guess.
Okay, Councilmember Hurley, you'd second to the motion?
Yes.
Okay, then, Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for those, we had a small lack of communication there. I guess we'll make sure Mr. Olson stays on his toes, and we get our money, our money out of our city attorney. Reason we asked to table this is due to some things that we've had occur in the last couple of weeks with some land sales and things that we're supposed to talk about later in this meeting. We're trying to do whatever we can do to figure out a way to do some type of compensation for our employees. They work very hard for not only us, but for all the citizens in Halton City, and that's the reason we asked to table this, to look and see if there was a way that we could look into this further and see what we might be able to do, if we can do anything at all. But that was the reason for tabling this budget at that time, but understanding that through the legalities, that we have the ability to amend our budget at the next meeting, I'd like to ask that we approve this budget, which is ordinance number zero dash two, zero zero three, dash zero two five, dash zero three, on second reading.
Okay, we have a motion.
With possible, I'm sorry, with possible amendments on the September 22nd meeting.
Okay, Councilmember Hurley?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, if you'll register your vote, I'll display it, and that passes out the vote, okay? We move then to item number five, and we do have a number of citizens who have asked to speak on item number five. After Mr. Alfred introduces this, and any questions from the council of Mr. Alfred, along with any comment by the city manager, those who have filled out requests to address the council on the subject of the tax rate will have an opportunity to do so. Mr. Alfred?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this...
Excuse me, excuse me just a moment, I hear some noise out here. Could Mr. Alfred have our full attention, please? Thank you.
Thank you. This ordinance accompanies the budget ordinance, which we just discussed a little bit and did pass. It sets a tax rate for the next fiscal year that will provide sufficient revenues in the general fund, and it most certainly is not the only revenue source in the general fund, but it provides about twenty-five percent of the revenues that will allow us to operate primary city services of public works, public safety, police and fire, library, parks and recreation. The proper notices have been placed in the newspaper, quarter-page ads were placed on August the fifteenth and August the thirtieth, and we have had announcements concerning this tax rate placed on our website in accordance with state law. Again, expenditures that are supported by this tax rate will permit the city manager to carry out the budget that this council adopts tonight and perhaps may amend in the future. I don't have anything else other than that.
Questions or comments for Mr. Alfred, from anyone on the council? Mr. Torres, any comment from you?
No, as I, just briefly, I guess, as I said at the last council meeting, when we had the first reading on this ordinance, I think the council and staff as a whole are generally concerned about this proposed tax increase. It's been a number of years since there's been one here, and it's fairly significant tax increase, and there was a whole lot of hours spent on developing this budget, not just coming up with ways to generate more revenue like the tax increase is going to do, but cutting out. I mean, we've eliminated in our general fund more than twenty positions for next year. Up till now, we have not factored in any kind of pay increases for our employees, and even cut our budget proposed next year from this current year, and still wasn't enough, and the tax increase was the only other option we had to bring in the kind of money necessary to keep the budget balanced. So there's been a lot of attention and consideration given to this, and I just think, I'd just like to share that with y'all who are here tonight and those at home, and just let you know that it hasn't come easy, but it is our recommendation tonight.
Okay, what we did a moment ago on item number four, the council took action to approve the budget, and what we're looking at now is to set the tax rate relative to that, and I want to ask a question before I call the two individuals who have filled out request cards. I want to ask a question for our attorney. I know I've had an opportunity to talk with a number of our citizens the last several days regarding the constitutional amendments, number thirteen and number seventeen, that we'll be voting on later in the week. They have to do with the freezing of the tax rate for seniors. Can you make some comments about what impact either that passing or failing on Saturday would have on this action we're taking tonight? Will it have, if we go ahead and pass this tonight, setting the tax rate, will that automatically freeze in the rates if the constitutional amendments are approved on Saturday?
Mayor, as I understand the constitutional amendments, if they are approved, they will allow the different governing entities to allow for a tax freeze in certain circumstances, and alternatively, they will allow citizens to petition for a tax freeze in certain circumstances, but the approval of the constitutional amendments does not automatically put a tax freeze into effect. That'd be something that could occur in the future, depending upon whether or not it was acceptable in a particular jurisdiction. But all the constitutional amendments would do is authorize statutory petitions or action by different governing bodies to place freezes on certain tax rates. That would be something that would occur on future tax rates. Your tax rate tonight will not be affected by that constitutional amendment, whether it passes or does not pass, because that is a future action that would be permitted if the amendment does pass, and if it doesn't pass, then there will be no changes in the law with regard to tax rates.
I appreciate you bringing clarity to that, particularly the last couple of sentences you made, that whether they pass, those two constitutional amendments pass or not on Saturday will not have any impact on the tax rate we set tonight, and it being frozen at that level.
That's correct.
Okay. I wanted to be sure we all were clear on that, and we'll, Councilmember Williams?
Now, when you're talking about the freezing the tax rate, does it freeze the tax rate or freeze the tax at that, at that, where it's at?
Councilmember Williams, I'll have to read the amendment in more detail to see whether it allows either or both of those options, but all I know is that the amendment proposes to allow a freeze up tax rate at certain, in certain circumstances, for senior citizens, for example.
Well, if I understand this right, regardless of how this vote goes on Saturday, if the tax has increased six plus cents, if it does go to a vote later, it will still be freezing if that tax increase?
That's correct.
Okay, so it will have some bearing?
It will have some bearing, but what I'm saying is that, first off, we've got to take action on a tax rate tonight, and whatever action the council takes will not be affected by that constitutional amendment. Whether you have a higher tax rate or a lower tax rate, the constitutional amendment will not go into effect until an election is held in Halton City to determine whether or not a tax freeze will take place.
I guess to close on, in other words, if you go up to six cents on the tax rate, we have an election in May to have this, to freeze it, then the tax rate will be froze at the higher rate of six cents.
That's whatever rate it is at that time.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the attorney? Okay, our first request to appear before the council, filled out by Mary McVeigh. Ms. McVeigh, if you'll come forward, give us your address for the record, please, and you have six minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Calvin, Mayor.
Would you like to pull that mic down a little closer? That was for a tall guy, and if you would, thank you.
Thank you very much. I've spoken to Calvin White, and we are on the same page, and I agree on many things. I went to the senior meeting, I went to the senior center, and I listened to Bob Griggs. Bob Griggs sent me the list of the amendments, and I also have here from Senator Jane Nelson, and I can read that particular amendment if you'd like me to read it. Number thirteen, that's going to be voted on on Saturday, Proposition thirteen, it authorizes a county, city, town, and junior college district to freeze property taxes on a residential homestead of a person who is disabled or age sixty-five or older. HJR sixteen is sponsored by Senator Nelson. So this particular thing that you're doing is five days before we get to vote, to freeze it, and this was my purpose, to come down here and ask you to postpone the vote until after we get an opportunity to vote on the twenty-two amendments Saturday, that's five days from now, and it's very important to some of us, and I called my booklet that has all of the Birdville Association of Retired Teachers, and most of us are on a very limited salary, plus we also have a number of expenses that consistently come up. In other words, we have the TXU, we have the water system, we have all of these taxes that have come, and each one of them, in fact, one lady was telling me, she, her husband is deceased, and she has part of his social security. Texas teachers do not have social security unless the husband was in the system long enough, or, as I have mine, I worked twelve years before I became a teacher, so I have mine, which is not a great deal because at that time, women weren't paid a great amount. So what I wanted to do, my purpose tonight, was to postpone this vote until after we get a chance to vote on September thirteenth, and I even underlined all of this that was from Senator Nelson, and she said, "One of our most precious freedoms in this country is the right to vote. Between the primary, general, municipal, and local ballot elections, we have many opportunities to exercise this right. Elections to encourage participation to save tax dollars. The Texas Legislature has established four uniform election dates each year, four of them. The next uniform election date is September thirteenth. On the ballot are several constitutional amendments approved by the Texas Legislature during the 2003 regular session." And then she goes on and says, "Another ballot item, I sponsored, Proposition thirteen, gives taxing authorities the ability to freeze property taxes for senior citizens and the disabled. This will allow communities to assist those individuals who are living on fixed incomes and finding it difficult to retain their homes." My home is forty years old, and most of the people in my age bracket are, they have a house this old, and especially in my particular neighborhood, there are two ladies that are ninety years old, just in my block, and their houses, they have had business... 90 years old, just in my block, and their houses, they have had businesses, they have had different things that they have done during their lifetime where they put back their money, and they went ahead and paid their houses off. But if you raise their tax rate, it does strike at the heart of what they have, and you don't seem to realize that maybe $60 to $75 makes a difference in your lifetime, makes a difference in how you live. So, my suggestion is postpone this vote so that we can vote on that Proposition 13. Let us have this vote, let us have this privilege of voting. Every time they open the polls, I vote. I go and vote for all of you. All of you are sitting up there, I voted for you. So, this is something to think about. And I think you need to realize, we have all these people in my neighborhood who have owned businesses, and who have dealt with the public, and who have gone ahead and worked, and really had firms. I have a neighbor that owned a cold storage firm, and I have Bobby Holtham that lives in my neighborhood, and he owned the store that made jewelry, and his daughter now has two jewelry stores. We have all these people with experience, and when I was talking to Calvin, he said you needed to get an economic group that would work with bringing business into Holtham City. I have a marketing degree, and I certainly could work with a group and work on the economic part, and go out and meet people. I worked 13 years in this field, even though my actual degree is a master's in English and Journalism, which I did at the college at night so I could keep this up. But what I want you to do is to vote to postpone this till after we get a chance on September 13th to decide whether we come and do the actual voting. This is a statewide vote of 22 amendments, and I went through all of these, I've got them right here, and Bob Griggs also explained them to us. Are you going to cut me off?
Ms. McVeigh, your six minutes are up, if you will go ahead and wrap it up.
Oh, I just wanted to request that you would let us vote on September 13th, because the state of Texas is voting at that time, and we have four votes during the year. And it would be very, very positive to me if you didn't close us out five days before we get a chance to vote. I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. McVeigh. I think there may be some council members who have questions or comments, so if you will, remain at your place.
Oh, yes.
Did you give us your address for the record?
Pardon?
Did you give us your address?
Yes, 5952 Diamond Oaks Drive South.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Ms. McVeigh, first of all, thanks for coming out and expressing your opinion tonight. I'd ask the question, I think you're pre-council, I'm going to ask the question about the...
Also, I'm a veteran, USMC.
Good. Counselor, I'd ask a while ago, Ms. McVeigh just said that if they vote on this Saturday the 13th, now, could you explain that a little bit more depth? Will it go ahead and allow them to freeze it? Or does that give them the right, does that give us the right to call for a vote?
I wish I had the actual constitutional amendment in front of me to read from, rather than just the ballot proposition. Do you have the whole amendment? Let me look at that real quick.
Thanks for bringing it. We'll give the amendment a glance, I don't think this will be another five-minute break, but...
Unfortunately, what I'm looking at here is a description or explanation of what the amendment does, but it's not actually the amendment itself. But, Ms. McVeigh, as I understand the constitutional amendments, well, first off, we've got two issues here tonight. One is, by state law, the city council has to approve the tax rate tonight. They have no choice. This is the last day to approve the tax rate, so it has to be done tonight. The constitutional amendment, if it passes, will allow the city council to freeze taxes on future tax rates. But I think the constitutional amendment will specifically anticipate that the tax rates set this year are not going to be affected by the amendment, because practically, it just doesn't work. That is, this constitutional amendment will simply allow a city council or another governmental body to freeze tax rates in certain circumstances, but they have to go through a process to do that. It doesn't go into effect automatically if this amendment is approved by the voters. It merely authorizes governing bodies to take action in the future to freeze future tax rates as they apply to homestead properties for senior citizens and disabled citizens.
I understood it was your rate right now.
No, that's not my understanding, and I don't have the actual amendment, but that's not my understanding.
I had the sheet, I didn't bring it, you know, because I had put my votes down, how I voted. I already voted on those. I went early, first day they opened it.
Councilmember Williams, you have further questions?
I'm just confused on this, and I've read it and read what's been put out in the media about it, and I've heard, I had three people call me today with the same concerns that you have, and...
Yeah, the yellow sheet.
Some of them say that it's allowing the citizens to have the right to vote to freeze this, and I think...
This is the actual Proposition 13 that's on the ballot. What other one would you have?
Could you read the very last statement you said a while ago, when you said, "Gives the council and the governing bodies"? Do you have that right there handy?
Oh, what Jane said?
Right.
Okay. On a ballot item I sponsored, Proposition 13, gives local taxing authorities the ability to freeze property tax rates for senior citizens and the disabled. This will allow communities to assist those individuals who are living on fixed incomes and finding it difficult to retain their homes.
Okay, it says, "Gives us the ability",
Yes.
But if I understand that right, if I've done some study on it, that means you have the ability through the election process to let them, did I read that, or did I dream it, or?
What I'm anticipating, and if we want to, the city secretary has said she can pull the actual constitutional amendment...
Here it is, right here.
Off the internet, and we can read that and resolve that tonight. But what I'm understanding this constitutional amendment would do is allow the city council in the future to place tax freezes.
Doesn't say anything about future. These are the proposed constitutional amendments on the ballot.
That's right.
This is Jane Nelson who proposed this, and she's got it right here, Proposition 13, it's on the ballot.
And what typically happens after an amendment is approved to the Constitution, then a statutory provision goes into effect. I imagine there will be, there's an amendment to the tax code that authorizes this to happen. The constitutional amendment is simply to allow it to happen. It doesn't happen automatically with the constitutional amendment, however.
That was mine, that's where I'd read, that it didn't do it automatically, it just allows the ability for the governing body to do that.
She said this is sponsored by Senator Nelson, and this is her book, her little booklet that she sent to me through the mail. And I went down and voted, and that's the way it was, on the ballot.
Councilmember Williams?
I don't think you can fudge on this one.
I guess I'm just confused. You know, they moved the regular voting day from November to September this year, and then this takes place five days before our budget, and according to our charter, we had to have our tax rate set, I believe Mr. Alfrink said a while ago, today's the last day that we had to set the tax rate. Am I right or wrong?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
But, you know, in all truthfulness, the economic development, and I've watched kind of the city, you know, slide down this little hill, and I've watched the, now that church up by me, they said it's for sale, and the Kmart went out, and the Winn-Dipsey went out, and all of these different places, and I think you've got a real source of people who have been in business, who are very knowledgeable about owning a business, about running a business, and they could work together on getting this set up. We have, I have neighbors that said they always have to go somewhere else to eat in a restaurant, and if they can have alcohol down at, what's his name?
Oscars.
The Mexican Oscars, and they can have alcohol at Diamond Oaks, and they can have alcohol, well, they have it out there in Rothrichland Hills where they just buy the bottles, I guess. But it's just the idea that you have to work on these things. You have to use strategy, you have to make plans, and we certainly have a nice little town, why can't we keep it up?
I'd like to clarify that, I'm not the only one who has counseled the new Oscar sold alcohol, I think they all did.
Ms. McVeigh, you've more than used up your time, and we thank you for coming before us and bringing these issues up. The city secretary has gone to the website to get an actual copy of the amendment, and at that time, the city attorney will give us a legal opinion.
Okay, she's got something here.
We've got a few more to go through, don't we?
She's got a website here for this.
Mayor, don't we have some more speaker cards on this?
Yes, we do.
It's 1-800-252-VOTE. Call the Elections Division.
Ms. McVeigh, if you would, we have another speaker who has requested to speak.
Okay, yes.
And in the meantime, the city attorney is taking a look at the verbiage of that amendment, not just what appears on the ballot. And after the next speaker is finished, the city attorney will have an opportunity to address the issue that you just raised, and thank you for raising that.
Okay, I brought 42 people.
Okay, we appreciate it.
Are you all here?
Thank you for bringing those individuals with you. The second person to request to address the council on this issue is Ms. Nancy Hilger. Ms. Hilger, if you would, come to the podium and give us your address for the record, and you have six minutes, please.
I live at 5230 Dana Drive. I've lived there 50 years and one month, and I don't know what I can add to what Ms. McVeigh has already said, except I'd like to talk a little bit about what fixed income means to us. It's been four years, I think, since we had an increase from TRS, if we're retired teachers, which we are. And in that time, our insurance has gone up, our medical amount has gone up, and for some of us, instead of us getting an increase in our, quote, "fixed income," we've had a decrease. I also have some social security, because I worked over 10 years before I started teaching. And my social security has done the same thing. I get a letter each year that says, "I'm going to get so much this year, but I'm going to have an increase in medical, in Medicare." So, the result is that I get less than I did last year. Okay, in that period of time, in the last several years, my taxes, my property taxes have gone up over 500 percent. And this is going to go up even more. Now, that's a ridiculous amount. So, a fixed income is really not fixed at all. It's not fixed upwardly, at least. And I'd like for you to think about that for us senior citizens who have to buy more medication each year, and, which is going more than doubling, and some of it is tripling for next year. And what do you suppose it's going to do the year after that, the year after that, and the year after that? So, I really would appreciate what you're doing. And I do, I would like to ask a couple of questions. I don't know what this tax rate is. I have not seen the amount in print, and I don't...
Mr. Alfrink behind you, hands it.
Mr. Alfrink, would you answer Ms. Hilger's question?
I did know, you had said it was an appreciable amount. While he's looking for that, you mentioned that this budget included the library and the parks and so forth. And my question is, the dollar a month we pay to each of these, that making $2 a month is part of that budget, I guess. But we're already paying for that.
That is correct, ma'am. That additional amount that is often volunteered by citizens here goes into a separate fund, and those monies are used separately to fund a variety of projects. But the tax revenue that comes into the city goes within our general fund, which is our much bigger, larger operating fund.
If I may, as requested, on August the 15th, in the Star Telegram, we did publish, as required by law, a one-quarter page ad. And in this ad, it compared last year's taxes to an average home, to the taxes on an average home for this year, and both tax rates were listed there. Last year's rate, I should say, the current rate of 45.5750 per hundred dollars of value, yes, 45 cents. And the rate that's being considered tonight is 52.095 cents per hundred dollars of value. The average home in Holtham City last year was appraised at $65,000, excuse me, that's after the exemptions. The average home value last year was $72,922. This year, that average value is $77,926.
Well, I doubt that I could get anything like that. First of all, I have foundation problems that I've already spent several thousand dollars on, and would have to spend a lot more than that to get anything appreciable out of it. But it does go up each year, and that makes the taxes go up, too.
Thank you, Ms. Hilger. Councilmember Williams, Ms. Hilger, before you go back to your seat, would you remain for a moment? Councilmember Williams has a question or comment.
I know you was talking about you could, do you know what your tad appraisal is on your home?
I can't quote it right now, I haven't looked at it for a while.
Roughly?
It's something like $60,000.
Okay. One thing I'd like to point out, if I can, we have a $50,000 tax exemption for people over 65, is that right?
Right.
And then you get the $15,000, $10,000 for the homestead?
Correct.
Is it $10,000 or $15?
No, it's...
Minimum $5,000.
Yeah.
So, you're looking at $55,000 probably on your...
Yeah.
One thing that I'd like to point out to you, and the rest of y'all that are here tonight, you're probably aware of it, but if you're not, when you get that tad appraisal every year, you can protest that.
I know, I've done it. It's kind of worthless, because when I went to the...
Are you talking about tad or protesting it?
Protesting.
Okay.
Protesting is rather worth it, because when I went to the trouble of taking pictures and doing all the, what I needed to do, and I got a notice that, okay, they'd reduced it by a certain amount, but they've increased the taxes by a certain amount, so what it ended up was more than it was in the first place.
Okay.
So, I gave up protest.
I just wanted to point, just keep on, though, keep protesting.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. I think our counselor is ready at this time to clarify the issue that was raised by Ms. McVeigh earlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I've gone from no copies of the amendment to three copies of the amendment, so I've had a chance to read the actual constitutional amendment and what it provides. If on September 13th, when this matter goes to the voters, if the voters approve this, then it authorizes, I'm paraphrasing here, but it authorizes the city council of a city to take official action to provide that if a person who is disabled or is 65 years of age or older receives a residence homestead exemption, that the total amount of taxes imposed on that homestead by the city may not be increased, as long as the residence is continued to be occupied by that person. It also allows for a petition to be signed by 5% of the registered voters of the city, and if that petition is signed and submitted to the city council, then the city council must call an election on that issue. And it provides that once the freeze on the total homestead taxes is made, either by election or by the governing body, then that can... election or by the governing body, then that cannot be reduced ever, provided that the person who is disabled or a senior citizen continues to reside at the homestead. Cannot be reduced.
You said reduced, it cannot be increased.
The exemption cannot be reduced.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Any questions for the attorney on the clarification? Okay, there being none, I think all other discussion has taken place. I'm in line for a motion regarding item number five, the approval of the tax rate. Councilmember Hurley?
I move that we approve ordinance zero-two-zero-three-dash-zero-two-four-zero-three.
Have a motion to approve. Do we have a second to that motion? Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. That's for a second, and I would ask that we can have a little bit of discussion about this motion before the motion is taken, before the vote is taken.
Okay. Are you ready for some discussion?
Yes.
Proceed, please.
I'm one of the new councilmen, and I came into this as a concerned citizen that wanted to make a difference in Holton City. I saw the same things that Ms. McVeigh saw in this city. I saw a city that was beginning to deteriorate, businesses moving, things like that. And I was concerned. I didn't have access to the funds. I didn't have access to the financial data that was here. It can be looked at at the library, but who has time to get down to the library all the time and read through a lot of budget data? So whenever I became a councilman, I immersed myself in this as a responsibility and as a service to you as citizens, to look through this information and to see what's going on in Holton City. Why are these things happening? I saw that our fund levels have been decreasing for several years. We have been losing sales tax revenue in this city. We've been losing franchise tax money. We have not met the budgeted revenue that has been required to operate the police, the fire, the street maintenance, and the different services that we have asked this city to provide. It was very difficult to look into this and say, you know, we need to do something about this. And what that something involves is a tax rate increase, dipping into the funds a little bit further to keep the tax rate increase a little bit lower, doing things like that that hurt in my own family budget. There are times whenever we have to cut back, and I have to figure out how to make more money to make ends meet. That's where we're at with Holton City. I don't see any good reason to vote against this tax increase. There are political reasons to vote against it, but I'm not willing to take that risk in serving the citizens of this city. I think it is the right thing to do and the right time to do, to set this tax rate right now for the citizens of Holton City, so that we can have a city that we're going to be proud of in the next five or ten years. So that's why I'm voting for this tax increase. And I appreciate all of you that came and commented to me about this issue and read through the numbers with me. Some of you came to my house, I went to some of y'all's houses, and we went through the numbers. And I really appreciate your time in doing that. It was an education for all of us. But that's why I'm voting for this tax increase, because I believe in Holton City, and I don't think there's any good reasons to vote against it.
Further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and take a rebuttal at the shot about there's no good reason to vote against other than political. First of all, I'd like all y'all to know that I'm in my third term. We have term limits. I got eight months left up here. And so however I vote, whether it's far or against, it's not going to matter whether I get elected next May. I'm doing exactly what I think's right. Now, I think it's good that we go down there and immerse ourselves into these books, you know, when we get elected on the council. I came here for a year, every council meeting before I was elected, got every piece of information I could get. And so I didn't go down there and do a crash course in two weeks when I got elected. I did some research before I got up here. I've been doing research ever since I got up here. I think this budget's top-heavy. The reason I voted against it, I think, is tax rate. I sat right here with this gentleman here and some other people, talked about, well, we don't need to have a high tax, we need to give a moderate tax. And I sit there and listen to all these deals and the budget sessions about what we should do and what we shouldn't do. But now that it gets up to the night, and what we're going to do, and I would like to hear some of the other councilmen, how they feel on it, I feel like we've worked very hard on this budget, we've cut a lot of things out of this budget, we've left some things in this budget that still could be cut, we've cut some things out of this budget that didn't need to be cut out. And so when I vote no against this six and a quarter, it's six-point-something tax, I've got some employees sitting back over on this other side, and it's hard to tell employees, Ms. McVeigh, you said that you, and Ms. Hilger, your salaries on your retirement aren't increased. And y'all being schoolteachers, you knew how you liked being rewarded for your work when you were doing good. And then each year, you know, you were probably rewarded. I've got two-hundred-plus employees here that want to be rewarded as well. And with a, I know we're going to work later on this, but with the tax rate we got figured right now, and the budget we got, we got figured with zero raises. Am I right? Zero raises to two-hundred-plus employees. I had not thought that was fair from the time the budget started. I didn't think about it two weeks, didn't think it was fair two weeks ago, and I don't think it's fair tonight. And so when I vote tonight to vote against this tax increase, do not vote for me next May, because I won't be running. I'm voting because it's right.
Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I'd just like to comment that I'm in agreement with some of the things that Councilmember Williams said. And the reason for all the confusion and delay earlier was in the hopes that we were going to address some issues toward the employees, because I feel like there's some money available that we can look for. I think it will be available. And I think the employees need to be addressed as far as a compensation. And I think even if we have to cut some more, that there are some positions that can be cut without severely hindering the city from operation, or being critical. But I do believe there's some money available that we can come up with to give to the employees, although it might not be a lot, but this is what we're hardworking trying to do. And we can't reveal all the details yet, because we don't have them all. That's why we're kind of confused. With that in mind, I'm in favor of adopting the tax rate.
Councilmember Fowler?
I was going to choose not to speak, but I guess I will. I guess I'm in agreement with parts of all my colleagues and the things that they've said. Having served on this council on and off for the last eight years or ten years and being involved in it, you know, I've seen it when we've decreased taxes, and I've seen what it's done to us. You know, if you drive up and down some of the streets we have, it's because we made some decisions to hold taxes and not do things that we needed to, and we tried to prolong the life of some things. It may not have been the best choice at that time, you know? I'm not going to sit here and say it was, I'm not going to say it wasn't. But I know that coming before you as a council member and as a property owner here also, it affects me no different than it affects anyone in here. And when I look and realize that there's thirty-four cities in Tarrant County, and Holton City even after we raised the taxes six and a quarter cents, we're the twenty-sixth lowest taxing entity in Tarrant County, there's only eight cities that have lesser tax rates than us, we get a pretty good value for the taxes that we spend. And I feel like that, you know, it's something that we all must do. If we're going to continue to either improve this place, it takes money to improve it. We can't continue to run it on nothing. You know, and I hated the fact that any of us are going to have to pay more taxes. But it's something that we all must do, and we're at a point right now that it's critical that we do do the things necessary to take care of our employees and provide good services for the rest of our community. I mean, we can sit out there and say, how important is it for your medication? And some of you shake your heads, but if the policeman or the fireman can't get to your house when you're having a heart attack or something, how important is that? You know, how important are those firemen whenever we can't afford to keep them here, provide EMTs, or do anything else whenever you're having a heart attack? They're important, they're very important. And I don't like it, but when I need a service, I want to know that I'm getting the best service that I can, that money will pay for. And I don't want to shorten ourselves in the services that we do have.
Ma'am, the council has this under discussion at the moment, and you've had more than your six minutes, and we really appreciate you coming before us tonight and bringing this up. But we do need to move on, we do need to move forward with this, please. Councilmember Fowler?
That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Further discussion by the council on this item? Okay? There being no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. If you'll register your vote, and the vote is, I mean, the motion is to approve item number five, I'll just play it at this time. Motion passes. I think, ladies and gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is item number six. Let's take a ten-minute break. I know most of you, or many of you here, came regarding item number four and five, and you're certainly welcome to stay if you'd like. But we'll take a ten-minute break, and we'll return at about fifteen till nine. Ladies and gentlemen, we're called back into session following that recess, and I want to thank all of you who are here. We have a number of other items to address before the council meeting is brought to conclusion tonight. The next item is item number six on the consent agenda. That's consideration and our action regarding the approval of the acceptance of advertising bids and designation of the official newspaper. And our purchasing agent, Betty, and I think Pat, both are going to make the presentation to introduce this.
Yes, I was asked to investigate getting lower prices for our ads, and I got...
Yeah, you want to move closer to that line?
No, not really.
Would you please?
I got specs from the city of Ullis, because I work with all the city purchasing agents, and they had just done this recently, about two years ago. So they were very kind and gracious, let me use their specifications. And that's what I sent out. I sent out to Northeast, excuse me, I sent out to Northeast News, which is Holton City News. I sent out to Star Telegram, and also sent out to Dallas Morning News. We received responses from all three of the newspapers. We did analysis, and we are making a recommendation based on their replies and responses. And the criteria is to make sure that we get the best price, we make sure that everything is legal, and meets all the criteria the state has, and it does the best value for the city.
Members of the council, any questions for Betty? And then I think Pat may have some comments to make. Councilmember Ransome?
Well, this may be more for our attorney than for Betty, even though I'm sure Betty's well-versed with it and can answer it. Can, just because a lot of the people out here aren't familiar with what the state and the charter requires for our official newspaper to be, could we get someone to bring everybody else up on the same speed we're on on that, please? Could that be...
I'll be glad to do that. The city charter, which governs many different aspects of how the city runs its government, provides that the city must specify an official newspaper in order to do publications of official notices. And the charter says that the official newspaper must be a newspaper of general circulation. In addition, state law, the Texas Government Code, provides certain minimum requirements for newspapers that publish official requirements. Anything that a governmental entity has required or authorized to publish in a newspaper must meet certain requirements. Just summarizing quickly, there are seven requirements that the newspaper must meet. First, there must be more than a minimal number of subscribers within a certain geographic region. Second, the newspaper must have diverse types of subscribers. Third, it must publish items of general interest to the community. Fourth, it must devote not less than twenty-five percent of its total column lineage to general interest items. Fifth, it must be published at least once a week. Sixth, it must be entered as a periodical class postal matter in the county where published. And seventh, it must have been published regularly and continuously for at least twelve months before the governmental entity publishes notice. So between the city charter and state law, those seven requirements must be met in order for a newspaper to qualify as an official newspaper.
Thanks.
Anything further, Councilmember?
Well, not right now, maybe later.
Councilmember Fowler?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Rika, the legal notification for sex offenders and the different things that advertising and all, do all three of the newspapers meet those criteria?
No, sir. For the sex offender laws, notices, those have to be in the most highly paid number of subscribers in the county that the sex offender resides. That's the state law. So that would have to go with one that's in the county, it's got the highest by state law.
Councilman, I think what she's saying is that regardless of which paper we might decide is the official newspaper, state law would require the sex offender ads to go perhaps into a different paper. It would have to be the one with the highest paid subscription.
It would be county-wide, though, not based on city, just county?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I had.
Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Betty, I've got a few questions. On these, this bid proposal analysis that you gave us, who came up with this?
Uh, Pat.
Pat? Okay. On number four, frequency of publication, if it's just required once a week, I mean, the scoring system ought to be all tens, right?
Well, actually, I think that there is a valid reason to have a differentiation there, because sometimes we have unexpected issues come up, where we may want to advertise for a meeting, or a public hearing, or something of that nature, and we may want it in the paper just as soon as possible, and not have to wait seven days.
Okay, but as far as state requirements, is what I'm getting at, the seven state requirements needs to be published once a week?
Yes, that is correct.
Number of paid subscribers in Holton City. I don't know if I understand that or not. We have five-hundred-and-ten from the Dallas Morning News, and then eleven-hundred-and-seventy-one on Sunday. The Northeast newspapers, it says non-responsive, seven thousand distributed weekly.
Yes.
And Forest Star Telegram, forty-nine-hundred, so...
Our attorneys, basically, with their two interpretations of the law, their two opinions were the same. They elaborated a great deal more on the second opinion. They pretty much stated that the way it reads, it must be counted as paid subscribers. And while that information was asked for from all three papers, it was not received from all three papers.
So Northeast News just didn't respond to that question?
They offered alternative information, but did not specifically answer the question.
And then I've got a question on number eight A.
Eight A contains a mistake that was brought to my attention. I flipped a number on the far-right-hand side near the bottom there, where you see nine dollars and ten cents, and thirteen dollars and thirty cents. I have corrected that and made a different scoring based on that, but it did not materially alter the overall score. The same selected paper still comes out.
So what was the new scoring rate on that?
New scoring then would be the Dallas Morning News with sixty-three points.
Let me get to that page.
I'll wait. I'll wait.
Okay, sixty-three.
Dallas Morning News with a total of sixty-three points, the Northeast News with a total of seventy-nine, and the Star Telegram with a total of one hundred and nine.
Okay. That's all at this time, Mayor, thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have, just for simplicity's sake, for clarification, is the intent of our official newspapers, if someone could give me a definition, is it to inform our community of what goes on and the legal things and, I guess, the requirements of the different things with the sex offenders and things like that? That's the purpose of our official newspaper?
You know, it's similar to, if I may make an analogy, analogy between the purpose of our investment policy, you know, someone who was not aware of all the issues might say, well, the purpose of our investment policy is to earn the most money, no matter what. Well, that would also mean incurring the highest risk. Here, our only goal is not to just have the cheapest rates, but also to inform the greater, greatest portion of the population on issues that are very important to both them and to us. And also, many of the ads that we run need to reach vendors who may be throughout a several county area, not just Halton City by any means.
Okay, well, that's, I appreciate the clarification because if I base it on what is the official newspaper for dissemination of information within our own community, I have to look and say, well, if I have one paper that's providing seven thousand, seven thousand issues per week, and one that's providing five hundred and ten daily, and one that's once a week that's seven thousand, and one that's forty-nine hundred, I would think that the most amount of information would get out would be your local news. I mean, that's one thing, having studied some journalism in college and having a degree in it, I know it's about local, 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 so people want to know about their own news. They don't, they're more concerned with that than anything else.
But again, one of the goals that we have is to attract qualified vendors for our business also.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Williams, questions for either Betty or Pat?
Well, I've got, had we already, I don't think I missed a meeting. Had we already voted on this?
Nope.
Well, there's a resolution in my pack, whereas the city of Halton City, blah, blah, states that the Star Telegram, Fort Worth Star Telegram is hereby declared to be an official newspaper of the city of Halton City for required publications, legal advertisements. Is that true, or, you know?
That is based, that is based on the recommendation, it certainly can be changed.
Oh, it says rec, mine doesn't say.
That ordinance was drawn up based on staff recommendation, perhaps we assumed too much.
Second page of the council.
The recommendation is, is on the agenda cover letter.
I think putting this resolution is a little premature. I also see some, probably some, some numbers, and number six on page one shows Dallas Morning News, five, ten daily, paid subscribers, eleven seventy-one on Sunday, Star Telegram shows forty-nine oh six daily. The Dallas Morning News has better than two to one circulation in Halton City than the Star Telegram does on Sunday. I assume it's forty-nine oh six on Sunday, too.
What the Star Telegram gives us on the Sunday is their county. We didn't ask for Sunday, a differentiation between daily.
That's in seven, though. I'm looking in six where the number of paid subscriptions and we put daily, and I'm not, we're talking about the official paper of Halton City, not the official paper of Tarrant County. And it shows five hundred and ten daily for the Dallas Morning News and non-responsive for Northeast News, which state law says they only have to have it once a week with their weekly circulation, six thousand nine hundred and seventy-five, if these numbers are correct. And the Star Telegram only shows forty-nine hundred daily. Even if you doubled the Sunday for the Star Telegram, which I don't think that it would be doubled, Tracy's got the calculator in his phone, that's still less than ten thousand. Is that right?
But I believe the six thousand nine hundred and seventy-five are in areas other than Halton City.
Do we have anything else that we, when we put out a bid for, that we, we take a bid on a scoring system?
I think we use a scoring system on lots of things that we take bids on, and it's a common practice in the industry.
Can you name one?
Absolutely. If you look at any Consumer Reports magazine where people commonly look for comparisons of many products and many different specifications for those products, you will often see numerical scoring systems in there. I was also reviewing a popular automotive magazine where they compare ten different vehicles.
I'm sorry, Pat.
And they used a numerical scoring system also.
You must have misunderstood me. Do we, do we, Halton City?
Yes, we do also. I believe on...
Procurement of professional services, architects, engineering?
Yes, auditing, our auditing services, we've used this sort of a format, it's a very common industry standard, it's not something I invented.
I don't know, this, I'm not happy with the... Mayor, let me withhold my thoughts and let me hear some other people, let me reserve the right to come back, if that's all right with you.
I beg your pardon?
Let me reserve the rest of my thoughts for a moment and hear some more comments and then come back.
Okay, Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Betty and Pat, for putting this together. I'd noticed that this study is a mix of qualitative and quantitative figures that were giving us a picture, that was just not a quantitative analysis, but it included qualitative issues. For instance, one of the councilmen brought up the idea of a property rate notice, for instance, and what impact that would have based upon which periodical or newspaper we used. And if we had one that was just local, they would not reach the potential buyers for property notice that we might reach with a newspaper that enjoyed better circulation within the county. So that would be a qualitative measure. And I noticed in the analysis here that there were many things that had quantitative measures of cost, but then there were also other things in here that had qualitative measures with the paper, and I noticed on page one or some of that. And I realized that probably those qualitative measures had a lot of things behind them that came into rating them, and I think that they're pretty fair. Whenever I look at these, they look like a pretty good picture, and I appreciate the picture you've given the council. I see that it's really puts together what I think is the right answer for us. And I just want to say I appreciate your staff doing that, thank you.
Okay, any further questions for Pat or Betty? Councilmember Henderson?
Is there any possible way this might be for council that we can have, you know, a co-paper? I mean, two different papers for local issues and like for the legals and other things that need to be announced outside in the county range?
Councilmember Henderson, let me, let me read this while I answer your question. I'll put my thoughts together as I read the requirement of your charter and the state law. Your charter requires that the city council designate a newspaper published either daily, semi-weekly, or weekly, end up general circulation in the city as the official newspaper. Your charter doesn't elaborate on what the official newspaper will be used for, it just says it will be designated as the official newspaper. What causes me concern is the requirement of the government code that says that a newspaper in which a notice is published must meet certain requirements. And therefore, when a governmental entity is required to publish notice, it has to meet the requirements that I went through earlier. And the concern I have is whether or not designating two papers would allow us to avoid publishing in one of the papers of a specific matter. We would have to look at it on a case-by-case basis, and it, I'm not sure whether or not that would be a practical way to approach this because under the language in the government code, notices that are required to be published have to be published in a paper that meets certain requirements, and we would have to make sure we got all of the required publications in one newspaper, and those that weren't required to go in another newspaper possibly. But as far as designating two different newspapers as official newspapers, I think that would be permissible, but it's the requirement to publish certain notices in a newspaper that meets the requirements of the government code would have to be adhered to. And the concern I would have is, is make sure that if we are going to designate a paper for publication, that it does meet the minimum requirements of the state law.
Anything further?
That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Henderson? Uh, Councilmember Fowler and Councilmember Williams have their light on, and we'll get to them in just a moment. I do want to mention that we have an appearance before the city council speaker request form filled out by Mr. Dick Hodson, and we'll call Mr. Hodson up in a moment after the two councilmen have an opportunity to ask questions for either Betty or Pat. Councilmember Williams, I believe your light was on first.
It's Kent Flannan, room. Sorry to interrupt, let's see if Kent Flannan's there. I think I came on the council, May ninety-eight, and at that time, the mayor at that time, I think, was Gary Larson, and former mayor Nancy Watkins was the mayor pro temp at that time, I believe. We were discussing, and Ms. Vay said while I go about the businesses in Halton City and trying to bring local business. At that time, we had a business group meeting once a month, and there was quite a few business owners that got together in that meeting. And one of the things that came up was they felt that the city of Halton City needed a local newspaper, someone that could bring businesses together, advertise for local businesses, and not only that, but also have any business here locally that we kind of call our own. I know there was a lot of time, a lot of hours spent trying to put this together, and they finally got it put together, they finally got a newspaper to come to town, and it's a big gamble to come to any town and try to put in a newspaper. I moved here in fifty-four, and I don't know how many newspapers have come and gone since we've left. And I've just been doing this to kind of stall, I'm ready for you, Kent. Yes. We've had two property sales recently.
Yes.
In the latest, I suggested that we do some alternate advertising, not only with our official paper that we were using at that time, but also use an alternate newspaper. Can you tell me if there, if you could tell any difference in the response of the two?
I'd have to say we had a lot larger response for the second one, in which case was the situation where you were talking about adding to the advertisement the local news. Of course, there were more properties, but I'd say overall, we had a much bigger response.
Well, we know what the properties were appraised at, we know what the properties bought, and I've looked through and I recognize quite a few of the people that were top bid on the properties, and that tells me people from this area read it somewhere, I don't know where they read it, the Star Telegram or if they read it on cable TV or where they read it. But my belief is somehow, we got a lot more people, a lot more response out there.
Yeah, I will say this, the first bid was for taxable properties only, that is tax foreclosure.
Right.
And we didn't advertise those in the paper, all we did was place signs. The second one was for non-taxable, and we're governed by the local government code, so we had to advertise, but we did advertise both in the...
The one we saw on the courthouse steps, we didn't advertise in the paper?
No.
Aren't we required by law to do that?
No. Again, it was a tax foreclosure.
Okay. I won't ask your opinion on whether you think this out.
All right.
I won't put you on the spot, but we didn't get quite a bit of response off the last...
We did, we had over seven, I took, my department took over seventy calls, and I know there were other departments that took calls as well.
What kind of, what kind of article was placed in the Star Telegram on that? Was it the regular inch column, column wide, so many inches long?
Yeah, it was just your typical legal ad.
In my opinion, if we'd ran that ad like that, and that's the reason I suggest to run the ad in an alternate paper, because when you go through and you put that in there, you have a very limited group of people to go through looking at those bids.
Right, it's pretty standard looking.
When you put that in a bold box ad where everybody can see it, I think you draw, Councilmember Sutton while I go, said you, you bring in more of a field that's coming out, and Mr. Alfrink said the consumers report, you know, we require heavily on that. I think lots of times in our life, we were required too heavily on the consumer report, and I think we should get out and do some of the investigating ourselves. And I agree with Councilmember Henderson, as far as a co-paper, I think the sex offender ads, I think they belong in the Star Telegram. I think they need to be where everybody in the county can know where those people are at. I think it's a good tool we have, but as far as some of the local, local stuff that we have here, the way I put in the paper, I would like to see it in a local paper doing business over in a local city.
Anything further, Councilmember Williams? Uh, Councilmember Fowler, and then we'll recognize Mr. Dick Hodson.
I didn't know if you were in line for a motion yet or not.
I believe it'd be appropriate for us to recognize Mr. Hodson since he filled out a speaker's request form. Mr. Hodson, you told me during the break, probably wasn't going to make any statement, just be here to answer any questions. You want to come on up and identify yourself and let's see if there are questions that, and you certainly have the opportunity to speak to the council if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Dick Hodson, I'm publisher of Northeast Newspapers, our offices are at seventy-four twenty-nine Airport Freeway in Richland Hills. I was not going to make any comment, but there were some very legitimate questions and some concerns addressed up here tonight, and I'd like to give a little input on some of them. The city attorney listed seven criteria, four of them are actually in statute, and the other, I believe, are in some other documents. But the first one he mentioned was a, more than a minimal number of subscribers. The term that's in the law is de minimis, and is specifically not defined. It has never been defined, to the best of my knowledge. There were two court opinions in the forties that addressed it, but it's never been wrapped up in law. And the first one of those was in Dallas in nineteen forty, and the judge in question said a thousand people would be enough subscribers for the city of Dallas. So it's not a very big percentage of your population that's required if you want that. The other items that he brought up are absolutely on the button, and by the way, I want to digress for a second. There is no question about the sex offender notices, those have to be published in the paper with the largest circulation in the county, whether that's your official newspaper or not, there's no, there's no room for debate there. The other criteria that are in the statute, diverse types of subscribers, general interest, twenty-five percent of your space has to be news, so forth and so on. Actually, the attorney said periodical postal notice, postal rate. The law still says second class, but that's been out of existence since nineteen ninety-seven. The federal changed it from second class to post, to periodical. Texas has not rewritten the statute at this point, it still says second class. As a matter of interest, we mail first class because we don't have enough subscribers to make it worthwhile to get the lower rate permit, so our papers actually go a little faster than if they were second class permitted. The other requirements we all meet, we've been in existence twelve months, so forth and so on. Councilman Henderson brought up a question about publishing as soon as possible in response to something Mr. Alfrink said. And yes, there are occasions where you may want to publish quickly, I have not seen a case, and correct me if I'm wrong, where anybody published more than once in a seven-day period. Unless you do something on Saturday or Sunday that requires publication, you won't be a seven-day delay with us, wouldn't happen. And the other thing that I just want to agree with, Mr. Alfrink said that the determination should be based on the cost and the greatest number of readers. It never says... It never says in the law anywhere paid subscribers, it says readers, general circulation in the city. And I think that is what I would hope you're going for is most bang for the buck, which is the most number of your citizens reading it for the least cost. I don't think anybody here is in disagreement about that, it's just a matter of how some of the terms were defined and applied in this, uh, analysis. As for the question about us being non-responsive to the subscription question, we probably were in that we did provide alternative information. We've been a free distribution paper since we started until earlier this year, we switched over and started taking subscriptions. Our number of subscriptions is not indicative of the number of people in Haltam City or the other communities that we serve that read the paper. It's nowhere close. We hope it will be soon, we'd like to have that revenue, but as of now, the number of people that actually get it far outweighs the number of people that pay a subscription for it. That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, councilmember Williams, you have your light on and then we'll, uh, allow other members of the, uh, council to ask questions of, uh, Mr. Hodson and then we'll move on when that's completed to, to the motion.
You had pointed out some of these court cases back in the 40s, that was before my time.
Mine too.
Shoppers, there used to be a newspaper, it used to be the Star Telegram, the Fort Worth Press and then the Weekly, Fort Worth Weekly Shop or something like that. Does your paper compare it to that?
No, no, and, and if I make, just kind of jump on that. Historically, there's two of these items that are tied together, the 25% of your space devoted to general news and second-class mailing permit. Those were set up years and years ago, I've been in this business since I was eight years old, so bear with me. Uh, those were set up specifically to keep shoppers from getting a cheap postal rate.
Defined shoppers?
Uh, it's a publication that doesn't have news in it. The Thrifty Nickel, The Greensheet, that sort of thing, where it's all advertising of one sort or another. Uh, and it was specifically, newspaper publishers got together and lobbied hard to get the postal service to make that distinction, to keep shoppers from getting a cheap mailing rate to compete with them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Sutton, and then if there is, uh, no further questions, we'll move to the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming tonight, it's obviously you have a passion for what you do, especially if you've been doing it since eight years old and I just wish you the best. I also do mailings from time to time, two, three, 400 people at a time and, and for various, uh, reasons, but I saw it profitable to get a bulk mail permit for those two or three, 400. Now, you're not saying that you're mailing first class because you have less than two or three or 400 people that you're mailing to, is that true?
No, not at all, I'm saying we do it first class because the actual number we mail to is less than that, yes. Because all the people who subscribe in the local area, we deliver it, just like the Star Telegram, the Morning News. The people that we mail to are typically the legislators in Washington and in Austin. We have a few people who are vendors in these communities, uh, as example, the guy that's developing the new shopping center in Watauga is a subscriber, he lives in Dallas, we mail to him, because he's outside of where our carriers go. Anybody who's outside the four cities that we serve, Haltam City, North Richland Hills, Richland Hills, Watauga, and the Park Glen, Summerfield's part of Fort Worth, if they're outside that delivery area, we mail to them. So yeah, there, there are fewer than that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
Councilmember Fowler.
A couple of questions real quick, uh...
And then we'll move to the motion when you're, when you're finished, please.
Yes, sir, that's fine. Um, Mr. Manager, or I guess, are, are there any representatives from the Star, Star Telegram or Morning News here tonight?
Uh, we have our local reporter here, but I don't, I'm not sure she's here to address the, this issue.
Okay. Mr. Hodson, can, uh, I've, I've appreciated having your paper here in, in the community, it's, it's good to have the local news and I think that's very important, I think y'all have done a good job for, for the citizens. Do you see any problem with, with fulfilling, understanding that if we were to put certain requirements that have to go into a larger news, newspaper for, for the bigger circulation area, but do you see any problems with, uh, providing the services necessary to, to fulfill the, the official newspaper of Haltam City?
No, not at all. Um, in fact, I'd like to, if I may, go back to something that, uh, Mr. Sutton...
Don't go too much, because I'm going to drag this out.
Okay, he, uh, had asked about, he uses a bulk rate permit. Uh, we chose not to do that, although it's an option, in fact, I, I, we spoke at the, uh, the pre-council meeting when some of you asked me some questions in August. The paper in Keller, which is the official newspaper for Keller, Hasslet, Roanoke, Trophy Club, Westlake, and someplace else, oh, in Keller, they do all their mailing bulk rate, they have no paid subscribers at all. And all of those cities have used them for, to the best of my knowledge, about 10 years is their official newspaper. So that would be an option, but we chose not to take it because you incur about a two or three day delay in getting the papers to the subscriber, or to the reader that way.
Versus the delivery option?
Yes.
That's what you're, you're saying, you give better service by doing the door-to-door delivery?
By delivering them to the ones in the community and first-class mailing outside the community, just because they get them overnight typically.
And that's the reason y'all are doing that?
Yeah. And if it, we, if we had a sufficient number to make the cost worth it, we would probably go to the second-class permit, but we don't have to do it at this point.
Okay. That being all you have, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we do the interest in, in the, uh, I feel like that the, the information that this paper can provide for us, I'd like to ask that we consider or, or make a motion that we use the Haltam, or the Northeast Newspapers, Haltam City Edition is our official newspaper for the city of Haltam City, and then any legal requirements that, uh, would fall outside that realm, we fall upon either Dallas Morning News or the Four Star Telegram.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, the Forrest, councilmember Branson?
I really didn't mean to turn on my button, but since I did, I'm going to make a substitute motion based on, uh, our attorney's opinion because according to the way I interpreted Mr. Olson's opinion, the Northeast News did not meet all seven requirements that's set out by the state law. So I'm going to make a substitute motion that we accept the Fort Worth Star Telegram as our city paper.
Okay, I need to stop just a minute with all of this motion and substitute motion, we got into this one time before and I wasn't prepared, but I am tonight. First of all, we have a motion on the floor and I need a second on that and then we, we can come back to you on, on the substitute. Uh, councilmember Williams, is this for a second?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to second his motion if he would amend it, that the items that in, are in this, uh, in this motion that cannot be covered under the state law would be ran in the other two papers, is that what you said in your motion? Could you restate your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Councilmember Williams, I ask that we make the Northeast Newspapers Haltam City Edition the official newspaper for the city of Haltam City and any requirements that, that are required by state law to be required in a larger subscription paper, uh, do so in either, either or, or both, miss, uh, possi, is possible, possibility, uh, for the Dallas Morning News or the Four Star Telegram.
And my second stands.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Branson, you have a substitute motion? Okay, do you want to restate that, please?
My substitute motion is based on Mr. Olson's opinion that the Northeast News does not meet all seven requirements that the state sets out for an official newspaper. So my motion is that we make the Fort Worth Star Telegram the official paper of Haltam City.
Okay, councilmember Sutton?
Uh, point of information for our, um, attorney, and, and, and it will be a second, but is it, is the main motion even legal, seeing that we, that doesn't meet the criteria that was set forth by the state?
First of all, let's get your second to the motion.
There's a second there, too.
Okay, and now your question for the attorney, before we unravel this, uh, primary motion and second and substitute motion.
For clarification, uh, I, I've not rendered an official opinion on whether the Northeast News meets the requirements, I, what I was talking about earlier, were the seven requirements for a newspaper, uh, that is going to publish matters that are authorized or required to be published by state law. I have to admit, from what I heard from the speaker for the Northeast News, I did not, um, hear that he, uh, that his paper is entered as a second-class postal matter, which is now known as a periodical postal matter, that is a requirement of state law and, uh, the, uh, anything required by state law to be published or authorized by state law to be published should be published in another newspaper if it doesn't meet that requirement, in my opinion.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Well, I was just going to say that I, as a councilman, don't want to incur any more legal cost to this city on behalf of my votes or my actions, so I'm going to have to vote, uh, that's why I added my second to the ma, to the motion for, that Diane put forth.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Now, yes?
When you're ready, I, I want to add one thing to this. May I?
Please do, and then I've got to unravel this, uh, substitute motion thing, so...
Uh, number one, if a dual award is made, which has possibly been suggested here, I'm not sure that the other papers would honor the, uh, would, or would have to honor the bids that they submitted, because I believe they were submitted under the belief that a single award would be made, so I can't guarantee that. And, and number two, again, is the city attorney alluded to, any advertisement that was made under the requirements of state statute, uh, the, and not including the sex offender ads, uh, and those are the bulk of our advertising. Uh, I, I'd just like to point out, in this tight budget year, we would probably incur, it would probably increase our advertising budget by, say, one-half to two-thirds, uh, if such an award were made and following the, the recommendations that I've heard here.
Okay. Now, let's take just a moment out to unravel this substitute motion stuff. Let me back up. Not substitute motion stuff, the substitute motion that, that has been made. After this happened the last time, I, I went down to the bookstore and bought a book on Robert's Rules of Order, so I would be able to, to, to handle this the next time it came up. Well, Robert's Rule says, and that's what we're going to, to follow tonight, we have a primary motion on the floor to award this to, uh, the newspaper of record to the Northeast. We have a substitute motion that's brought forth and has been seconded, that we award that to the Star Telegram. Before we can act on the primary motion, we have to decide whether or not to accept, the council has to decide whether or not to accept this substitute motion. And that power rests with this council, so if you will, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I need first of all, a vote. Do you want to accept this substitute motion? And then if we do, we'll vote on the substitute motion first and then we'll vote on the primary motion. So what I'm asking for right now, I need a yes or no vote. Is it the wish of this, uh, council of seven men and women to accept this substitute motion? So if you will, register your vote. A yes vote means I'm in favor of accepting this substitute motion, a no vote means I'm not.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment before the vote. I'd like to, I've got, is my light not working tonight?
Your, your light is.
Is it on out there?
Your light is, but I've got to take care of this substitute motion first before we...
Well, can we have some discussion on the substitute before we do this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I'd like to do.
And that's what, okay, let's hear...
You, you bought you a book at, at the library or at the bookstore for Robert's Rules of Order? And I keep, I hate to go back to May of 1998, 98, but I was sitting up here one night and I quoted something from Robert's Rule of Order and the mayor that night said, "Robert doesn't live here and Robert doesn't vote." So do we go by Robert's Rule of Order with this council or, or how are we governed?
It's my understanding that it's the responsibility of the mayor to conduct the, the meeting of this council. In the absence of the council adopting any particular set of procedure that it is left to the discretion of the mayor, is that correct, Mr. Olson?
I believe that is correct, I'm not, I'm not aware of any rules of procedure that the city council has adopted and therefore the mayor as the presiding office, officer, uh, will conduct the meeting using reasonable rules of procedure. I might just comment, this, this comes up at a number of city council meetings that I attend and, and the issue comes up whether Robert's Rules of Order is appropriate and, and Robert's Rules has a lot of limitations in its application to governmental entities, it's not the best thing to use, there's no doubt about it, but because of the fact that a lot of city councils don't have their own rules of procedure, it is utilized often at city council meetings. And, uh, I'll, I'll just leave the comment at that, that it, for lack of something better, Robert's Rules seems to come back into play from time to time. So it, I, I think it would be appropriate for the mayor to follow Robert's Rules of Order if that's what he chooses.
Wayne, Wayne doesn't live here and Wayne doesn't vote.
No, he doesn't, and I'm glad for that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to, I'd like to go on record, in, in the future, we're going to run by Robert's Rule of Order, I guess that's what I want to know.
I'm going to use my judgment, councilmember Williams, on how to conduct this meeting and I think you and the citizens of this community have seen over the last two and a half years that I've been very fair, I've been over backward to try to keep things moving and, and to extend to everybody an opportunity to, to discuss issues. Until the council takes action to impose Robert's Rules of Order or not impose Robert's Rules of Order, I'll continue to use my judgment in, in how to, to proceed in that regard. If you want to use Robert's Rules of Order, I'd be more than glad to do that.
I don't care what, just as long as I know what we're using.
Okay.
As long as we're, you know, all on the same page, I don't care, you know, you're, you're the head of the meeting, you just tell us what we're using.
Okay, uh, we're using my judgment until we have something from the council to change that regarding matters of procedure.
Okay, so we're going to go by Robert's Rules on this one?
Yeah, that's correct, that's my judgment.
This is where I know.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Fowler, any discussion on the motion?
No, I, just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, now you say that this vote, is it to allow a vote on the substitute motion or is it a vote for the substitute motion?
It is a vote. This, the vote that we're currently taking is to, to, to legitimize, to bring a substitute motion forward for a vote that will be the next step in the process.
Okay, so we would vote whether or not to even bring this, the second to the table?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then if the answer to that is yes, then we will vote on the substitute motion.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, councilmember Williams?
One other point of clarification, now if we're, if we're going to vote to see whether or not we're going to take a substitute vote and we vote to take it, what's the point? No further questions.
Councilmember Fowler?
Uh, councilmember Williams, uh, I'll vote yes on that, just to extend the courtesy to, to any colleague, the opportunity to vote on it, that doesn't mean I'm going to vote yes and, and extend the opportunity for, for that colleague to bring this issue before the council, but then I will, I will vote no on that issue, but I will, will vote yes to allow it to be brought before the council.
Can I make one, can?
Yes, please.
I'm confused. We're, we got a substitute motion, uh, there was a motion made and a second. Now that's got to stay on hold until we do this substitute motion.
That is correct.
And then the, uh, what if I want to make a substitute substitute, would we vote on it?
We'll vote on it before...
Before you do all that?
On the substitute.
This, this is a learning experience.
Okay, good. Okay, we're ready now, we're ready now to vote on whether or not to accept the substitute motion, so if you will register your vote, I will display it. Everybody, have you registered your vote? Okay. The motion passes, right?
We're voting to see whether we will accept the substitute motion to vote on, is what you said?
That's correct, right. The motion passes to accept.
Okay, alright. We're going to vote on the substitute motion now.
If y'all ever bring up another substitute motion, y'all are in trouble.
Alright.
Now, Mayor, we're voting on, we're going to take, we're voting on the, the substitute motion.
That is correct. So the motion before us at this point is the motion councilmember Branson made to make the Star Telegram the, what is it called? The newspaper of record. If you're in favor of making the Star Telegram the newspaper of record on the substitute motion, vote yes, if you're not, vote no. Everybody voted? Okay. So the Star Telegram is not, the motion, the substitute motion goes down in failure. Now we're ready to vote on the primary motion, which is, would you restate your motion? And there better not be a substitute motion.
Hey, hey, Mayor, if nobody else tells you, you've done a good job. Uh, no, I would like to officially appoint the Northeast Newspapers Haltam City Edition to be the official newspaper of record for the city of Haltam City and anything that would be required to be reported in a larger circulation paper, it would be either in or both, the Dallas Morning News or Four Star...
or both the Dallas Morning News or Forest Star Telegram to meet any state requirement.
Okay, that's the motion that we have before us. Councilmember Williams?
I like amended motions. I'd like to accept his motion, if he would take amendment, that we do this on the condition that it's all legal, and if the council can bring us something to show us that it's not legal, then we'll re-vote on the motion at the next meeting.
Yes, sir. That's final. I'll accept that as a substitute.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, if you're in favor of the motion as presented by Councilmember Fowler and seconded by Councilmember Williams, register your vote, please. And that passes. So, the result of all of this is...
Go ahead and clap. Mayor, you did good.
Well, let's move forward. We're coming now to the visitor's citizen forum, and this is the time that's set aside for any person having business before the council, but it's not scheduled on the agenda to have an opportunity to speak to the council. All of the comments must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than to an individual council member or staff member. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request card, and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, because it's not been posted, it's not a posted agenda item in accordance to the Texas Open Meetings Law. Our first speaker to fill out a speaker's request card is Tommy Barrow. Mr. Barrow, if you will come forward at this time, give us your name and address for the record, and I believe the subject on which you wish to speak is City Code 42.57. And you have six minutes, please.
Thank you. My name's Tommy Barrow. I'm at forty-five thirteen D Lane here in Holtham City. The City Code forty-two fifty-seven, to me, is totally, totally unfair and unconstitutional on telling us what we can and cannot do to our properties. I have a carport that's covered my boat, been there for three and a half years, and some of the city council, past council members, have been by my house looking at Christmas lights and everything else on there. Nothing's ever been said about it until the city started their cleanup a couple weeks back. I got a final notice on some tires and wheels that I had back on the west side of my house, and I took care of that, got that cleaned up and stuff. And then, lo and behold, I get a ticket in the mail about an illegal structure that's on the west side of my house that's not permitted. This ticket is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and that fee is usury, if you don't, you know. I learned this in court, you know, in the last two years I've been, my mom's been in court. But this fee is totally ridiculous, and I would like to see an amendment taken to this, on this section of the City Code, to be as an eyesore. If it's an eyesore, or falling down, or something is totally wrong with it, then I can understand them coming and giving you a citation. But you're asking the citizens that can't afford to even pay your taxes that you're trying to bring up or pass tonight, you're asking us to put a ten-thousand-dollar piece of structure either in front of the house or on the side of the house for additional storage, or whatever we need to do. I don't have the money. And if that's the case, that I need to do that, then I'm asking the city council to give me a grant to build the structure.
Okay. Is that the purpose of your coming before us tonight, to ask the council to grant the permit to do that?
Well, actually, my purpose on this is, for one, I'd like to get this ticket dismissed. I've already got a court date for it also, and I'm going to have to miss work for that. So, that's wages taken out of my pocket, which is going to take out of your pocket, because I can't afford your taxes. But my proposal on this is to actually amend this City Code to state to where it's going to be, you know, be livable for all of the citizens, and not just for a few that can afford to do this.
Mr. Barrow, just for your benefit, I had a picture of the structure that's in question, and we've been circulating it here so that the city council could visually see what the citation's all about, just for your information.
Mr. Barrow, if you noticed a moment ago, when I introduced this section of our agenda, I mentioned that the council cannot discuss the items that are brought forth at this time. We're required to post this seventy-two hours ahead of time by law, and this item, your specific item was not posted, so it's inappropriate and unlawful for this council at this time to make any comments or anything. All we can do is to receive the comments you have made.
Okay. If you notice in the pictures, the tires that are in the back of this, they're no longer there. Those were my son's, and he took them off. And I understand you're on this, but, you know, in further council meetings and stuff, you know, this might be brought up to change this code. And that's what I'm trying to do here today, is request that you look into this code and try and make these, and try and make all codes, not just this one, but all the codes, livable for the citizens of the Holtham City. And if you can't do that, I can understand why businesses are moving out of Holtham City, because this two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a structure that's been there for three and a half years, and nothing's been said about it until now, is ridiculous.
Okay. Mr. Torres?
Just two things, Mr. Barrow, if I could. A question, were you, did you receive a prior notice, a warning basically, that you needed to take care of the business?
I received a door notice, hung on the door, and then I received this final notice letter about the tires, and it says tires and wheels. Doesn't say anything about illegal structure on the final notice.
Is that what the citation's about? Tires and wheels on it?
Citation is on legal structure.
Okay.
You know, not permitted.
Mr. Barrow, I'd be happy to meet with you at any time, and we could discuss it a little bit further. I think the reality is, you've issued a citation, and it is beyond this body at this point. It's beyond staff. It becomes a judicial matter, and it's an issue that has to be resolved in the court. There's nothing anybody here can do about that. But I would still be happy to meet with you and discuss it.
I understand that about the ticket, but, you know, you're the ones that make up the rules and regulations that we have to follow, but you're telling us too, that we can't live in our, you know, what is supposed to be our personal property.
Mr. Barrow, about all we can do tonight, we have heard your issues, and we thank you for bringing them before us, and for the city manager to offer to sit down and talk with you further about this, is all we can do tonight, so...
I just want to bring it up to you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
We have three other speaker request forms that have been filled out, and we take these always in order. They were presented. The next is Michelle Byrd. Ms. Byrd, if you'd like to come forward, give us your name and address for the record, please, and the subject is traffic safety at West Birdville. And you have six minutes, please.
Michelle Byrd, twenty-nine twenty-four Field Street, Holtham City. Well, I'd like to thank y'all, the city engineers and police department, for their cooperation and support in reviewing the traffic congestion at the academy in West Birdville. I want to also make sure that y'all are aware of the problem that we are having, so that we can have joint efforts to provide our schools on with a necessary tool that it needs to function the best way it can. And I've talked to several people, and I've realized that signs that won't make citizens obey, but it will provide a clearer direction for our traffic flow at our school. And I also realize that police departments cannot always be there to enforce these laws. But what I've done is, I've gone to all the elementary schools here in the Birdville Independent School District located in Holtham City. And my studies indicate that West Birdville and O H Stowe are the only two schools that do not have any parking signs, other than the bus loading zones. And in O H Stowe, there's plenty of parking space and plenty of roads, and they have allotted two roads there that are one-way to provide a safe pickup and drop-off system for their schools. At West Birdville, there's very limited space for parking. Parents are parking on both sides of Leighton Avenue and Wallfall Street, which is causing congestion. Students who are entering their car, or students are having to enter their car in the middle of the road, because cars are parked on the adjacent side of the school, not providing room for them to get in at the curbside. And parents are also double parking and leaving their cars unattended in the middle of the road. I've also noticed that at West Birdville and Spicer are the only two schools that have cars entering the one-way roads from the feral fair or the main road, and all the other schools that have one-ways are exiting onto the feral way. In the instance of Spicer Elementary, the traffic is prohibited to turn left into the one-way, so that oncoming traffic heading east does not cross the right-of-way of traffic headed westbound. In the instance of West Birdville, traffic heading northbound on Leighton Avenue and east on Wallfall Drive from Gene Lane are allowed to turn left on this one-way road. Westbound, Wallfall Street, oncoming traffic is allowed to cross the right-of-way, which this causes congestion at the intersection of Leighton Avenue and Wallfall Street. The traffic at the intersection of Wallfall Avenue and Leighton Avenue, or, excuse me, Leighton Avenue and Wallfall Street are not providing students with a safe place to cross the road. Most times, the traffic at this intersection is in the middle of the road, or in the middle of crosswalks, which also has no crossing guards available for the safety of our students at this school. Some drivers are making illegal U-turns on Leighton Avenue southbound because of the congestion on Leighton Avenue and Wallfall Street. Another point of concern is, parents are driving through the back parking lot of our school because of all the congestion. And please take into consideration that providing a three-way stop at the intersection of Fossil and Leighton Avenue would eliminate traffic congestion at that end of the road. A three-way stop provides a safe turn for west and east non-traffic on Fossil, turning onto Leighton Avenue. I would like to get this traffic flow resolved, because this time is a dangerous environment for every one of our students and parents who are trying to pick up and drop off their student. I'm here today to bring awareness to the city engineers, chief of police, city council, principal of West Birdville, so everyone involved can take a serious look at this issue, so that we can work together as a team to provide our schools on with a safe environment, and the school can implement a safer drop-off pickup system than we currently have. The academy at West Birdville is the only elementary school in Birdville Independent School District of Holtham City that has three different sources of traffic allowed to enter a one-way road, which is causing congestion and unsafe environment for the students. We're also one of two schools whose cars enter the one-way road from the feral fair, from the rest, when the rest of the schools are provided with a one-way onto, they come off onto the feral. We're also one of two schools that do not have any parking signs at all in our school zone, except for the bus loading zone.
Okay, hang on just a moment, if you would. Mr. Torres?
I'm going to try to address this briefly, if I can. This is my second school year to be here, and so, last year, my first year, I had a lot of calls about problems, and I had an opportunity to get out and visit the schools during those peak times. And I think there's probably not one person in this room that will disagree with you about the nature of the problems and the difficulties. You know, the fundamental problem is, the schools, the Virgil ISD schools here in Holtham City certainly, have two, three, and sometimes four times as many students going to those schools as was ever designed to be.
We have seven-hundred-and-five students at our school right now.
And it was probably designed for two or three hundred originally.
And all the other elementary schools here in the area have about three-hundred, four-hundred.
And those, you know, the traffic congestion has just increased many times over through the years as a result of the growth and development here, and improvements haven't been made on-site. A new development that is allowed to occur now is required to do a lot of on-site parking and maneuverability. The design standards are much more rigorous now than they ever were many years ago when these schools were built. And that's a fundamental problem, that the school district has not gone back in and taken care of, and modified the maneuverability around the schools and access in and out, and just allowed those schools to take on more and more students without taking that into consideration. And it's created a burden and imposed, you know, quite a bit of problems on the city. I'm not sure it's a problem that the city can resolve very easily. We've certainly had many discussions with school officials about it. I'm very frustrated, like you, and my daughter was at Spicer last year, and so, I can relate to the problems there specifically, you know, personally. But I'm not sure there's going to be any real resolve come as a result of this. But we'll certainly, I'd be happy to meet with you as well and talk about it. We can probably bring the chief of police in, and city engineer, and several people, and we can explain and talk to you about some of the issues. But a very difficult problem to overcome, and it's not something that the city of Holtham City would be able to do on its own, not without the cooperation of the ISD.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have two more who have filled out speaker's request forms, and after they speak, we're going to take a stretch break for about five minutes, and then we'll resume with our agenda. Mr. Bill Journay, Mr. Journay, if you will come forward, give us your address for the record, and the subject you've listed is three-point-eight million dollar loan. You have six minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I've read in the Star Telegram where we made a, something like a three-point-eight million dollar loan, and then I hear again all of this stuff about our finances being in pretty bad shape. And as a general rule, when my finances are in bad shape, I don't get to make a loan. As a matter of fact, my credit is so bad that some people don't even want my cash. Now, we have borrowed nearly four million dollars. According to the Star Telegram, this money could be used for recreation, a library, and transportation facilities. Could be, whatever that means. I remember Ann Richards once told us the proposed Texas Lottery could be used for schools and education. Police defined for us, could be. Allow me to offer a more better suggestion that could be, that perhaps sounds more like once was. Why don't we propose this money to shore up and increase our police departments and our emergency workers? Then, we could patrol our streets and parks and shopping centers and schools, and let's offer the citizens a more better, could be, system of social discipline. Let's do this twenty-four hours a day and pave our streets with goals from those who speed, run traffic lights, ignore emergency vehicles, yada, yada. This is sort of like what we did before, the famous city sales tax that grew and grew, proposed to increase police patrols. Remember? The advantages, of course, would be to enhance free enterprise in our neighborhoods, something we have talked about here tonight. If people were safer, especially after dark, don't you suppose folks would get out more, spend more? Or is the purpose of government to install ignorance and fear, especially after dark? And the children, let's do it for the children. Please, think on this. Dress like me, like I do, and go out among these high schoolers, asking concerning questions. I believe you'll discover that there is really nothing to do for them, especially after dark, except for recreation centers and your after-school programs. Whoopie. You may also discover that many teenagers are bored silly. If this is all we have to do, we have to offer, they would rather stay at home and/or drink... If this is all we have to do, we have to offer, they would rather stay at home and/or drink booze, have sex, do dope, do, do this especially after dark, rather than go to the rec center or be a part of your safe places, after-school programs, and other government-controlled environments. In fact, we would all rather be led like free people than controlled like masses. Now, don't you believe the free enterprise system is a better option? Well, maybe for everyone except the insurance man, but then, whose side are you on? That's what we'd really like to know. Why borrow money for government control when, if you use the money we have for what, for what it was first appropriated for? Most of us believe things, at least for Halton City, would be much better. So how exactly do you propose to spend close to four million dollars on us? And how would it even benefit even me? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jornay. Our next speaker is Nancy Watkins. Mayor Watkins, if you'll come forward, give us your address for the record, and the subject you've listed is animal shelter.
Thank you, Nancy Watkins, 6140 Blue Spruce Circle, Halton City. I wonder if I could substitute what I was gonna talk about. All right, I'm here, let me not take up any time. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Animal Advisory Board to issue a plea to our citizens and to our council and to our city staff. I'm asking for your consideration when receiving or making non-emergency calls for the shelter. I'm sure that some of you have noticed that our hours are changing daily. Since the shelter opened, we have been operating with anywhere from two to four ACOs. Most generally, it's two. That's two for a population of forty thousand people. The work is hard, often traumatic, and the pay scale is less than desirable. It takes a very special person to be able to do this job, and the burnout rate is high. There's considerable training involved, and one can look forward to dealing with vicious animals or euthanizing animals. Our ACOs also clean the shelter, they do the laundry, and they feed as well. We don't have a shelter tech to do that, to do that work. We're blessed with a few volunteers, but their time is limited. About a week ago, we had ten volunteers there, and they scrubbed and cleaned all day long, and I wanna thank each and every one of them for coming to our rescue. When we opened the doors of this shelter, we wanted to be all things to all people, and now we realize that that just can't be done, especially with the turnover rate we've had in personnel. We've always felt that we had to have an ACO on duty during operating hours, but in retrospect, that's probably wishful thinking. It's not unusual to see a sign on a shelter door saying that they're out on a call. You'll see that in some of our surrounding communities, even those with more personnel. It just happens that way sometime. The unfortunate thing is, it takes away from our main goal, and that is to adopt the animals out. Our mindset here in Halton City has always been that we want immediate results, and when we don't get them, we call our council member. And then the council member will call the city manager, or we just call city hall ourself. And in just a few short months, we used up our entire operating, overtime operating budget for the entire year. We were answering calls at 2:00 AM because somebody heard a dog bark, or calls are numerous for people that call in and just say they saw a dog running down the street. And so I'm asking you if you would please consider our plight, and it's just not possible for us to drop everything and go and look for a dog that someone saw crossing the street forty-five minutes ago. By the time you get there, that dog is a mile away. Anyway, it's, and, and I wanna point out most especially that I'm not talking about a public safety issue, a vicious dog or a dog bite. Those are priority items, and they'll always be top priority. What we have failed to remember is that the animals that are in the shelter are our main responsibility, and I might add, they're our liability. So I'm asking our citizens, and you, the council, and our city staff, to please be aware the next time you take or make a, a non-emergency call that concerns the shelter. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. To, to members of the council, I mentioned a moment ago, we can take a break, and we'll be glad to do that. We have the announcements, we have a public hearing, and then we should be through with our agenda. Shall we continue on with the meeting, or do we need to take a break? Okay, let's move then, and thanks to all of you who presented information to us in the visitor citizen forum. Your feedback is very important, and we listen very closely to, to what you have to say. Mr. Torres, you have an announcement, I believe, about an important event coming up this weekend.
I do, Mayor. I'd like to announce the Moon Fest that is coming up this, this Saturday. It's gonna be held from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Thomas Coliseum on Broadway, 6108 Broadway Avenue, for those who are not aware. This is an annual fest, festival that has occurred here in Halton City, and I don't know how far back it goes, but for some years now, they've had this here. City of Halton City is actually a sponsor of this event, and there'll be many staff people at this activity, and we'd like to welcome all of you to come. Lots of good food, John says.
Yes, excellent food. I believe our next announcement has to do with youth football, our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. George Fowler.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I just wanna mention that our Halton City Youth Football Program, which plays their games at Broadway Park, begins this Saturday, the 13th, and runs through Saturday, November 20th. When they start play, because of the construction up there, there's gonna be less parking available than normal. There's always parking, this primary situation up there is one of the problems. So what I wanna do is just say that, give you a little bit of instructions about some certain things. One is, plan for traffic up there. Plan for congestion, because it will be, there's only gonna be one way in and one way out of the ball field, so there's gonna be problems there. There is no parking allowed on the west side of Jean Lane from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturdays. That's to allow emergency vehicles to exit and also for traffic to flow between there. The police department has agreed to come up and monitor that situation. The other thing is, on the north side of Joy Lee, between Jean Lane and Katrine, there is no parking anytime, whether it's football or not. The police will also be monitoring that situation. I just want to say that, just be, be patient and make, make plans for an alternate route if you can, if you have to go down that area, especially between 9:00 and 4:00 on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler, and our interim city engineer, I believe, has an announcement, a very important announcement to make at this time, that should be of interest to all of us.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I just wanted to inform everyone that the U S Army Corps of Engineers has entered into a contract with Half &amp; Associates to do the design for the Little Fossil Creek improvements that we've been talking about for years. That contract was entered in August 25th. Currently, what is going on right now, Half &amp; Associates are preparing all their contract documents, quality control plans, that sort of stuff, for the core approval for the progression of this contract. The next thing that will happen will be, Half &amp; Associates will be surveying the creek and the property, current property lines. These surveys are not the final creek design, it's just what is currently in place. I am currently preparing a letter that will be going out to all the property owners along the creek, explaining this, and it is currently being reviewed by the Corps of Engineers, and Richard got it this evening. He probably didn't see it. Hey?
Yes, Mayor? Thank you very much. Mr. Torres, I believe you've got it.
I'd just like to add to that, it, it is a project that we're very excited about. It's gonna be, a lot of improvements come, come about on the south end of our city as a result of this project. It's, it's gonna be a long-term project, even though the design of the improvements will begin now, we're told that it could take about six months for those improvements, and the city will begin its, the phase of its involvement, and that would be acquiring some of the additional right-of-way or easement along that channel, and that, that process for us will begin sometime next year. It may be a year and a half to two years, or at least two years probably, before any kind of construction activity will occur, but, but again, this is a project that's been evolving here in Halton City for years and years, so we're, we're very excited about getting to this point of beginning the design.
The preliminary schedule, the design is estimated to take between nine and 12 months. The right-of-way acquisition, anywhere from six months to two years, and then the construction will begin after the right-of-way acquisitions are complete.
Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. I guess this bit for you, the city manager, you might elaborate on this. By doing this, it's gonna take some very invaluable land out of the south end of the city to make it very valuable.
Yes.
For, if one of y'all might want.
It's taking out approximately eighty-two percent of the structures that are currently in the Hundred Year Flood Plain, so it's reducing the flood plain significantly.
So we will be able to go down Midway Bridge sometime and see that.
That's the plan, but you know how those plans work.
I think, I think our citizens will all be excited about the fact that this is some of the early steps in that bond issue that, that came out in, what, 2001?
Yes.
So we're gonna see some things happen down in that south part of town, so let's all be excited about, about this first step.
You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Howell.
And if anybody has any questions, they can call me. I've got maps, I can show them what the preliminary designs look like or anything like that. It's 817-222-7778.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Mr. Hurley, I believe you have an announcement regarding some senior activities.
Yes, the spaghetti supper that the Senior Citizens Center put on, on the 15th of August as a fundraiser, was a great success, and they, they took in over, well, they took in over a thousand four dollars for their special gifts for Halton City, and this was a fund that they wanted to, to use to send cards and flyers and things to people whenever someone passes away or whenever they're ill. So it was a great success, and Bobby Arthur and Diane Brassman and Jim Sutton and the mayor and I went down and helped out, and had a good time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hurley. Councilmember Sutton, I believe you have our final announcement tonight.
The final announcement is, you may have heard the constitutional amendment election mentioned in the previous discussions, there is a constitutional amendment election going on right now. Tomorrow is the last day to early vote. You can vote down, at the Halton City Police Annex, if you live here in town, but there's thirty-one different locations throughout Tarrant County, if you work in a different area, where you could go vote tomorrow, but that's the last day. Saturday will be the official constitutional amendment election day. The polls open at seven and go to seven o'clock. You need to contact Tarrant County Elections for the location in your precinct, because that's where you'll need to go whenever Saturday rolls around, and if you haven't voted yet. And I encourage you to vote in this constitutional amendment election. There's twenty-two amendments, one of them which has been referred to, refers to senior tax exemptions, that's Proposition 13, if I believe, and there, there's a lot of information out on the web. If you, if you have web access, I recommend you go to the Secretary of State's website. There's a good analysis and also a lot of the bills behind what these amendments are gonna do to the Texas Constitution.
Okay, having completed our announcements and events, we'll move now to a public hearing, item number nine, and our interim city engineer, Mr. Bennett Howell, is gonna introduce that for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, residents. This item is the public hearing in action on P-016-03, to conduct a public hearing for the application of Walter Dootson for the final plats of lots one, two, and three, Block Five, Dootson Edition, being a replat of NPT of Lot Four and SPT of Lot Four, Block Five. Original town of Birdville Edition, located on the southeast corner of Broadway Avenue and Beulah Street, containing approximately 0.54 acres of land, located in the 5,900 block of Broadway and 3,200 block of Beulah Street. And the action is consideration and/or action regarding the final plat of lots one, two, and three, Block Five, Dootson Edition, being a replat of NPT of Lot Four and SPT of Lot Four, Block Five. Original town of Birdville Edition, located on the southeast corner of Broadway Avenue and Beulah Street, containing approximately 0.54 acres of land, located in the 5,900 block of Broadway, 3,200 block of Beulah. The applicant is final plating this property in order to add a residential lot to the site for residential development and to bring the existing lots into compliance with the city's subdivision ordinance requirements. The property is currently zoned SF2, single-family residential district. Existing utility locations are both on Broadway and Beulah. The developer has been notified that sidewalks need to be installed along the frontage of Lot Two on Broadway Avenue and Beulah Street. The applicant will need to make final payment to the city an amount of twenty, $250 for one newly created residential lot. These funds must be received by the city before the plat can be filed. In your attachments, you will find the 11 by 17 copy of the final plat, a site map, a map of property owners within 200 feet, a list of property owners within 200 feet, and an aerial photograph. The Planning and Zoning Commission, on August 26th, unanimously recommended approval of the final plat, P-016-03, to the city council, because the plat meets the minimum requirements for the city's subdivision ordinance.
Questions by the council for Mr. Howell? Okay, thank you, Mr. Howell. This is a public hearing. I'll open the meeting at this time to the public. Do we have, first of all, is Mr. Dootson in the, in the audience? Are his representative? Okay, I believe he is not here. Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either for or against this, this final plat? If you have an opportunity at this time. Okay, there being none, the public hearing is closed, and council, I'm now ready for a motion regarding the approval of this final plat. Councilmember Sutton?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve public hearing in action on P-016-03.
Councilmember Hurley?
That's for second.
And a motion, a second and a discussion. If you will, register your vote, please, and that passes by unanimous vote. Item number 10, resignations, do we have any resignations tonight? Appointments or reappointments? Item number 12 is a moot issue. We move then to executive session, as authorized by Section 551.071 and 072, and remember, we have item number eight to take action on after executive session. Council meeting is called back into order in regular session following executive session. The time is 15 till 11:00. I am in line for a motion regarding item number eight, the sale of property. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the sale of the nine properties listed in the council agenda to the highest bidders, those would be properties number two, three, five, eight, nine, 11, 12, 13. eight, nine, 11, 12, 13, and 18.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? A second for Councilmember Sutton. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor of the motion, if you will, raise your hand. Those opposed, unanimous vote. Council meeting is...